Yes, are we recording?
Yeah, we're recording.
Oh, okay. Well, hello, it's almost the end of the week, work week.
I mean, they don't know when they're listening to it.
I know, but so I'm just, I just had to say that because
Are you tired?
It's been a long week.
Yeah, it's been a long summer.
The summer has flown. But you just got done doing. And I know what I did this summer as well. I just feel like it went quickly.
That's crazy.
Like it.
The kid free most, they did go very fast. All my friends is like, yo, my kids is gone for this amount of weeks or whatever. So anything you wanna do, let's do it right now. I'm like, all right, babe, we gonna lock in and we didn't do any of it.
Did you just take that time to just rest? Rest your mind, get prepared for school again, cuz that's a whole. Like for parents, you know, when your kids go back to school, it's like a second job, homework, lunches.
Can you just back into that groove again about having to get up at that certain time?
School lunches are my arch nemesis, honestly.
They're the worst.
Yeah, cuz it's like they tell you what they want and then a day later, they don't like that anymore.
I know somebody out there is thinking what I'm thinking right now. I just think it's really ironic for, you know, you, not you specifically, Tariq, but you, my cause to be like, oh, you know, say I want this to eat, but then I don't really know what I want. I changed my mind or whatever, blah, 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 but it's cool.
Do I do it?
Nah, I said I was gonna say it, you know, I mean, I don't know who's listening. They gonna pay me a certain way.
All I know is that school lunches are hard. Like, what about your daughter? Is it, does she pack her lunch?
Um, well, this year she's doing half and half. Yeah, so she's gonna have pack and have, you know, she got real bad allergies and everything, so.
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, she's like allergic to nuts and milk and eggs and.
Eggs, yeah.
Eggs is in everything. I didn't know eggs was in so many things, like mayonnaise. Did y'all know that mayonnaise is made from eggs? But they have vegan mayonnaise. I don't see how that works. It's.
It's not the way mayonnaise was intended.
Was invented by the French.
They did everything. The French and the Germans.
So y'all know what I was found out today? I was watching, there's um, a show on like Hulu called like Searching for Soul Food or something. It's really good, but it also talks about the history of food.
You about to depress me?
No, I didn't know that.
Should we wanna know this information?
Really interesting.
It's gonna make me angry.
Thomas Jefferson. Thomas Jefferson took his. Sally Hemmings, cuz I'm not even sure what to call her without making myself mad. Sally Hemmings to France, right? Um, we all know, I think from the historical record, like she was under, would be considered underage at this point. She was also enslaved by him.
It gets worse and worse. And I did ask at the beginning, right?
So I'm telling you, so he took her to France, but not only did he take her to France, he took her brother. And her brother is considered the first like French trained chef. Um, ever in the United States. Like when he went there, he learned all of these French techniques and brought back things like french fries.
Hold up, hold up. You trying to tell me that Sally Hemmings brother? Brought french fries to America?
According to this. And it was like a myriad of other stuff that we consider like American classics. I wanna um, that he learned how to make there and then came and put his own spin on them that became um, some of the basis for like some of the like most popular foods that we eat. So yes, he was Sally Hemmings brother, who we know, which I consider this, I consider it a sad stuff. I consider her story very tragic.
How could you consider?
Cuz some people, some people, the way they described that, they describe it as a relationship. Right, but we have just started now, we have just now started to discuss her essentially being raped and groomed by Thomas Jefferson as that and not as a relationship, because that's not what that was.
People romanticized it because to sanitize it.
I've always known.
Like why was there a Disney movie about Pocahontas and John Smith?
But the song slept.
Like the soundtrack. Yes, the soundtrack was wonderful, but then like as a kid, you don't really understand like.
It's wonderful if you don't think about it.
That's America in a nutshell, right there. That's Disney in a nutshell.
But you know, if you go to Disney now, you don't see any, there is no remnants that there was ever like a Pocahontas. They don't have any merch, nothing like. She's, she's, she's not part of the Disney quote unquote legacy that they promote.
Are you sure?
Come to think of it, I don't see with the Disney princesses.
Yeah, you don't see Pocahontas at all. For good reason, but.
I'm not gonna die on that hill and everything, but I'm gonna look that up, cuz I feel like I saw some.
Nah, I, I was, I was there.
You were in Disney World or Land?
I was in Disney World.
I said land in Cali.
Which is the superior.
Funny story about this, and I promise, if people are like, yo, nobody cares about this, right? But I was in Disneyland um, in December with my daughter. Um, it's her first time, actually my first time going to Cali and her first time going to Cali. Um, she's a sixth grader and um, we got on the, on the, the boat ride. You know what I'm talking about? Uh, I forget the name of it though. Uh, what is the name of it? Guys know what I'm talking about. No, not Small World. There is a boat ride and it's Jungle Cruise.
Oh, the Jungle Cruise? It's one of the few that they kept as, yeah.
Well, they changed a couple of things. But we ran line and um, my daughter, she was asking like, oh, they just made the movie about it. I was like, nah, girl, like they made it a long time ago cuz the way I understood everything in Disney, they made the park after the movies. It's kinda like bringing the movies to life, blah, 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 whatever. And so I'm arguing her up and down or whatever. And I was extremely wrong. I was loud and I was wrong about the fact that they, the ride inspired the movie. Um, but there's a lot of, the movie's funny. Have you seen it? Jungle Cruise? With uh, The Rock in it?
I didn't see, my husband has never been to Disney and so he wouldn't appreciate the jokes. It's just like Pirates of the Caribbean, unless you've been on the ride, you don't appreciate all the jokes.
Yeah, I've never seen Pirates.
That's a good ride.
It is a great, it's a great ride, yeah. Which also was updated so that they weren't raping and, you know, they were just pillaging.
There was a ride they just recently got rid of at Disney World, but we could talk about that all day.
Listen, man, Columbus can't wait. Disney World.
I don't know how we, I know how we got here.
Can we take a vacation? We're not a vacation, but like a field trip to Disney World?
I, I'm not, not, I'm not going to Florida for a minute.
Disneyland is the best.
Disneyland is the best? No way, you don't believe that.
Magic Kingdom is lovely though.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And you know Orlando, they beat Governor DeSantis. He backpedaled. He was like, yo, I think y'all should go back to doing business the way y'all was doing it before, you know, and let's just all forget this happened.
Some type of, it has all the influence that he has in Florida. I have. Tourist dollars, but um, hello. The reason why we're here, cuz we went, we went to Pocahontas. And we can't wait to, so that we don't become the Florida of the north.
This is facts. This is facts. It's been encouraging news this week. Look, I'm dating this and everything, but uh, it's been encouraging news. Hopefully Ohio keeps on doing the right thing, so.
Yeah, hopefully. So to segue, we have a very special guest with us today. Nancy Day, our cop, our car?
Ockower?
Ockower, I was almost right. Um, she's running for District Two um, for City Council. So we are so excited to have you here with us today.
Extremely excited.
Well, thank you so much for inviting me. I say you're my second podcast, so it's still like for me, it's really, ooh, I'm doing a podcast.
Yeah, we were excited to have you on because we saw you at a panel that we helped host.
Oh, yes.
A few months ago and we just, you know, we're always, I think we're always interested. I'm always interested in what people have to say. Now, whether I agree or not is a different story.
I'm not interested in what everybody has to say. I'm not gonna lie. Like after they say a couple of words, I'm like, alright, I've heard enough.
For the long haul. I said I'm interested in the beginning. Now you might get five words in and I might say I'm no longer interested. But at the beginning, I'm always interested to hear. So we got to hear from you a little bit there and we thought, well, we need to certainly have you on the show, given that we are, have had many of the folks who are running for council. Um, or are currently on council on the show. So thank you so much.
You were talking on the panel. I was like, man, I cannot get enough of what she has to say. Like I was just hanging on your every word. And I was like, I, I would love to sit down and talk to you. This season of Columbus Can't Wait, Season Five?
We have this, I think it's five, cuz we, we have this conversation every episode and we still.
Well, I be forgetting.
Well, I think we're on five. I think so, yes.
She could just say five, right? No, but Season Five, it is, well, the way that we designed it, it's all about going into our local political offices and and talking about the people who were running for them or already hold them and talking about what those offices do. Uh, with the special emphasis on like the black politicians, cuz uh, we wanted to know like, oh, who are the people that's leading us on and so forth. This podcast, we designed it really because we wanted to make politics more accessible in our community. And um, you know, kinda break it down, cuz you know, we believe that you either do politics or politics do you. And for too long, politics has been doing us and it's time to, you know, change that narrative and whatnot, but uh, you know, we saw you on the panel. I think it was after the panel that we said we were gonna um, like grow the scope and everything for this season.
The parameters of that particular forum where, which was, everybody had the same specific question and next number of things to answer, which is limiting.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and we wanted people to also hear from you because I don't, I just don't think in general, people hear enough from the west side. Like everyone else always controls the narrative of the west side. We don't hear enough of the people who actually live on the west side or doing work on the west side. And I think that we have had that conversation often about like wanting to make sure that we um, in whatever ways that we can, can like give voice to that. So we know that that is the side of town that you live on.
Yes, west side, best side.
But I do think that the district that you're running for, it would represent, if I'm not mistaken, the high school that I graduated from.
District Two is the part that surrounds Hilliard. So um.
Doesn't it go to the northwest side too, like up off of Bethel and all that?
Yeah, it's way up. So a lot of different, multiple school districts and multiple high schools. Because if you live in the dis- in District Two, you're essentially bused to a, to a school.
Got you. I uh, went to Centennial. Does it cover Centennial?
I believe so.
I think it does. I think it does. So if I was still in school, then you would be my representative. Well, we're city council at least.
But we're elected at large, so and I'm a firm believer that every council member should be answerable to every resident and business in the city. It shouldn't be, you only have one person who's your person and that's the only person who should be fighting for you, that that's the only person that you should go to. You should be able to call every single council member if you have an issue and talk to them. Everyone should be answerable to everyone in the city.
I think that's, that's really like a perfect like, I don't wanna say, just jump it right into it.
Answerable.
Because whenever I had a complaint, I called all of them.
Well, and I think that there is also, so there's, I think, um, I won't say opposite perspective from some folks that if you don't, for instance, live on the west side, you are not particularly keyed into like the unique needs of folks on that side of town. And so how can you really uh, be responsive to those needs? But I also hear your perspective. And like I said, I like the word that you use, answerable. Like maybe I won't know everything, but I will know enough to give you some sort of solution or point you to the place where you can get solutions, because I, I guess I've never, never considered that there can be some silos.
What, um, we're, and now we have districts, but still every decision that is made by council members affects the city. Not just their little neighborhood. The advantage of the districts is it does ensure that you have council members who live in various parts of the city, who actually do have that personal experience of that district. Some of the districts are very large because they had to be drawn according to population. So you're not gonna be an expert necessarily on the entire district. Um, but it's an area where, that you go to, where you spend time with people. And so it does give you that needed perspective. Way back when, the first time people, you know, were trying to get wards on the ballot, cuz originally somebody went with more of awards idea and then we had a special election trying to get them in. Myself and members of the Westland Area Commission, which I served on for eight years, we were saying, you know, hey, we want districts or wards or some sort of representation because nobody comes to our side of town. It's like there's a force field around two seventy and nobody's coming out unless we, you know, really convince them to come out for a meeting at the area commission. So we really pushed for that. And the ultimate solution that came out, which was districts that are elected out, at large, I think is a, a good solution. It's not a perfect one, cuz there's never, you know, you can never attain perfection. You are, in order to run in your district, you are essentially nominated by the people who live in that district, because the only people who could sign your petitions are registered voters in your district. So to get on that ballot, you need two hundred and fifty valid signatures and you have to collect more than that in order to have enough that are valid. So you're out there knocking on the doors throughout your district, talking to people to get those petition signatures. So you really do have to do that work and have the people in your district sign that petition to get you on the ballot.
So then you're a fan of the districts and everything, the way that we're doing it now?
Yes, I, I think that, I think that's better than Cleveland is an example of one that does the traditional wards. And Cleveland is known for its infighting and difficulty getting things done.
Like for the people that don't understand the difference between districts and wards or the way that we do it here and the way that maybe Cleveland or other like war systems are, like what are the differences in them?
Well, with the traditional ward system, you are elected only by the voters in that ward. Whereas with our district system, you're elected by every voter in the city. So this election, you have to vote for all nine of us, being the first one, everybody, the, the, all nine of us would be on the, on the ballot. Um, going forward, it would be staggered, but you gotta sell yourself to the entire city. And I feel if you've got somebody on council who's not being, is not being helpful to the city, who's being an obstructionist, I would wanna vote him out. I wouldn't want somebody who is not good for the city continuing to serve, simply because you know, the people in their neighborhood liked them.
I can see, I, uh, this is my Libra side coming out, but I can definitely see both sides. I do think that there are some areas of town, I don't wanna say that they're insular, but I'll say that like people, some of the reasons why folks vote for certain people is because I've known them, they've done the work. I feel like they'll do the work for me. Um, and so some of those folks may end up, you know, now or in the future, losing an election because they don't necessarily have that um, rapport with the rest of the city. And I think that can be hard to do, but I also hear what you're saying about, well, nobody comes to the west side. And so we need to find a way to be heard. So I hear that, I think that those both, you know, are compelling arguments.
The very first time I met who, um, who was in council member Andrew Ginther, when he was running his first time to, for mayor, um, area commission invited both him and Zach Scott to come out and just you know, talk to us. And um, so when, you know, Ginther came out and my first question was, so what have you done for our community? And he started talking about stuff that he had done on the hilltop and I go, mm, I didn't ask you what you did for the hilltop. I asked you what you did for Westland. You're in Westland now. You're not on the hilltop. And he said a few more things and I go, mm, that's also on the hilltop. This is Westland. What have you done for Westland? And to his credit, he paused and he admitted, he goes, I've done nothing. And then that, he became very aware that he had not been paying attention to that whole west of two seventy. And that does happen, Columbus is a big city. You can't be an expert on every part of the city, but you sure can drive around and get to know. In my case, I've learned a lot of parts of the city because I always volunteered to do canvassing every election year. And I was willing to go, I said, I'll just, I'll go wherever. And they would send me to parts of the city that, you know, across town, places that I'd never been before. And so I've just canvassed all over Columbus and that's kinda how I got to know different parts of the city. I was also known as one of the few who would go to the neighborhoods that were, that a lot of other people were quite frankly afraid to go to.
Afraid to go to, yeah.
Yeah, and I was like, I'm fine. I, I'm pretty good at looking at a house and realizing that's probably a trap house. I have made a mistake. There was one where I was just in the groove and I was just going down the street and I'm like, this place has four registered Democrats. I'm going to this house. And then I'm looking out of the corner of my eye and it went, oh shit. Someone comes around the house and he very politely said, excuse me, can I help you? And I had all my little lit, you know, here, my Subaru is parked right out front. I've got this little Eddie Bauer outfit. And I've got my lid and that was when there was a marijuana thing on the ballot. And I go, hi, I'm Nancy from the Democratic Party. I encourage everyone to get out and vote. We've got this marijuana issue on the ballot. And he looked at, and he looked at it very carefully. He goes, thank you very much. I will take this. And I go, well, I hope you come out and vote.
As a politician, you gotta go everywhere, so.
How did you get involved in like politics?
My father was very involved in politics back where I grew up in the California Gold Country. And he was at times chairman of the Democratic Central Committee there. So it was always just a part of my upbringing that we were involved in, in politics through there.
So I guess like growing up, this is the first political office that you're running for here in Ohio, right?
I ran for the Ohio House in twenty twenty in District Twenty Three, which is the only red district. At that time, it was number twenty three, now it's ten, the only red district in Franklin County. Twenty twenty, during a pandemic and a Trump year, not a good time to be running for office in a major red district. I got forty-four percent of the vote, which is still really good for that, cuz they had a huge, huge voter turnout. I mean, I hit my win number, but it wasn't enough cuz so many more voters came out because of the push for. But this would be my first city council. The, a couple of times when we had openings on city council for Zach Klein's seat and later for Jaisa Page and Michael Stenziano, I had applied and was a finalist. So it's not like something I suddenly decided, oh, I wanna go in city council. It's something that I have worked for, for a long time. Because I've worked for my community and I just felt that that would be a way for me to um, do more for my community.
So like in probably what feels like a natural next step for you because of the work that you've done and your, you know, father and and kind of it being, it seems like it felt like a duty in your household to be civically.
Yeah, I grew up in a family that was always, you're very civic minded. And always, it's one of those, you always voted, you turned eighteen, you registered to vote, you never missed an election. You were always very engaged in what was going on. You were always involved in, and some sort of thing that helped your community.
So I think I read you, you moved to Ohio in two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five to earn my master's degree.
Did you know anyone when you got here or was this, was it kinda like maybe you knew?
One person in the whole state and he was in Cleveland. I moved out to attend seminary and I had researched all thirteen United Methodist seminaries. And I really liked the seminary there in Delaware. And I applied and uh, it was one of those things where I figured, well, I'm just gonna apply for one seminary right now and I'll see how, how that goes. Well, cuz it's, it's a beautiful, small campus. Very social justice um, oriented. Known for way back in the sixties, it was in the dispatch actually one day, that school was canceled at the seminary because all the professors were arrested down south for marching in civil rights.
Okay, so a legacy of.
There was a legacy of, of that. And so I applied and I, within a couple of weeks, I got a response saying, you know, yes, I was accepted and I was given a full ride scholarship with a stipend because of my years of community ministry where I was living in California. And so that made it easy, free school. Money for all those textbooks and stuff, cuz as we all know in master's programs, you gotta pay a lot of money on textbooks.
Yeah, or I don't know what the, I guess they have websites and stuff now. I haven't been in school in a long time, but I think. We had to still buy books, yeah, but I think it's a little bit different now. Someone needs to ta- tell me what's the difference. Like I heard there's like Chegg and. Is the ebook as expensive as like?
It's like it's electronic. Why am I paying the same amount?
For academic books, it's because very few people actually buy them, so yeah, they don't have that economy of scale. Yeah, cuz they're all a very niche.
Very true. So when you came to Ohio in two thousand and five, you were in seminary, what was like the first like community stuff that you were like, okay, that is what I want to involve myself in, in Columbus?
Well, while I was in seminary, I did the full time, so I got out of there in three years. So I was essentially just involved in things and involved with the, with the seminary. And then I was, but when I came and I actually drove down to Columbus, I was like, wow, this is a, this is a nice city. I really like this here. And the people are so friendly.
I'm saying.
And there's, there's so much stuff you can do and boy, tickets, tickets for, you know, musicals and. It's really affordable, but wow, this is great because. This is like really, this is like really great. And um, I just decided that I really loved it here and that there was really more opportunity in central Ohio than if I had gone back to San Francisco Bay area. And so for a few years, for four years, I was appointed to um, some rural churches, which was a great learning experience because um, rural communities have their oral tradition. It's a different communication style. I mean, yeah, I lived in rural areas in California, but that's not the same as agricultural rural Ohio.
When you say different communication styles, what do you mean by that? I'm from the city, so.
I went to school in Athens, so I have a little taste.
Yeah, the, the oral tradition, um, when you give a sermon at a congregation, there's oral tradition. You have to do a lot of storytelling and you weave your point through to get to the end. Where is, and areas that are more literary culture, you, you kinda, you go on a more linear path.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, so I had to learn to be more of a storyteller. And you also have to learn, it's, it's a great way to eventually go into politics, cuz you have to learn about things that are totally outside your experience. In a culture that may be radically different politically, socially. And these are people that you still have to love them and care for them and nurture them. So it's a great experience in how to live peaceably in a community that can have a radically different perspective than myself. I mean, you can imagine someone who's lived in the San Francisco Bay area for twenty years. Serving in rural Union County.
Very different. And that was, that was sort of like, us, like connected. And that was, that was sort of like, like connected to a question that I did want to ask you is like with your district, including like Westland, including like the Hilltop, including like Hilliard, I thi- thought I heard you say, like those to me are different.
Well, my district doesn't include Westland and the Hilltop. That's my, that's my ministry area. That's where I have served.
Okay.
The way the district lines were drawn, they used the railroad tracks as the divider. And I lived on the north side. If the district line had been drawn at seventy, then I would be in Westland and Hilltop. But it was drawn on the railroad track. So that put me in the area that surrounds Hilliard.
Ah, okay, got you. So then.
So it does put me in a position where there, there's actually two districts that I, that I know well. Yeah.
Okay.
And that allows you to be a better servant and everything. That makes sense.
Yeah. So then my question is sort of irrelevant, but.
What was it? I'm curious.
I, well, I, I was, if, if those were all of your districts, I was gonna say, those have like, while they're all the west side, they have very culturally, I feel like they can be different. And it sounds like your experience with that would have like served you well with just being able to like move through.
Well, Hilltop and Westland area is predominantly Appalachian culture still. But there's a lot, but that's changing as you have, have more new Americans, particularly the Westland area. A lot of people don't realize that west of two seventy is actually has more diversity. A lot of people assume that the Hilltop has more diversity, but actually the Westland area does. A lot more new Americans are moving to that community.
Yeah, we have a very close friend that lives in that area. So I've noticed that. And I just thought, oh, that's, that, that's, for someone to serve this area, you have to be able to be adept to like the folks who've been there and the new folks that are moving there. So yeah, my question is, was a little irrelevant now since I know that your districts are a bit different.
I got a question that kind of relates to that. And you were speaking to it a little bit about how, you know, people don't really have no representation from the west side. I know we've joked on this podcast and other podcasts I've been on, my other co-host, she's from the west side as well. And, it just, she's like, yo, the west side is lit, blah, 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 whatever. But nobody knows about what's going on. Like, you know, he.
All they know is what they hear on the news reports when somebody has been shot, when there's been. But yeah, there's much more to that. A lot of people don't realize there's an incredible amount of public art on the Hilltop. The murals driving up and down like Sullivan and Broad Street, you can see them. We have tons of incredible, beautiful murals out there. I bet most of the people out there in Columbus have no idea that there's, there's public art there. There are ethnic restaurants there. It's not just, you know, a lot of people say, oh, there's the casino. I personally don't consider that to be the highlight. It's not the highlight of the west side. And we are starting to, the, the resurgence on the Hilltop is starting to happen. We're getting more businesses in there. I mean, I was remember being thrilled when Third Way Cafe opened and we finally had a coffee shop. Which was also a social enterprise, but we're getting more of that.
On West Broad?
It's on West Broad Street over by the funeral home.
Yeah, okay.
He says a social enterprise, what's that mean?
It's a, it's a for-profit business, but their social enterprise aspect of it is that for like their employees, they will hire, not only hire, but you know, returning citizens, people who are in recovery. People getting out of prostitution and whatnot. But the company, which is all part of Clean Turn Enterprises. They actually, they don't just hire them, they kind of mentor them into a living in society again. And being, you know, a responsible citizen and teaching them the, what they called the crucible of work. Of the, you know, you gotta get up, get, get up and get to work on time and all those things to get people back into that rhythm of being a responsible worker and a responsible citizen. And giving them the emotional support. Because for people who are reentry or people who are in recovery, they need a lot more emotional support to get them, you know, back into life again.
Yeah. I think that one thing folks, like for, for people who've been in, you know, for instance incarcerated for like decades, they come out and like using a cell phone or the internet. Yeah, it's, it's, it's rough to, to even just integrate those pieces. The, the world is just vastly different and it's changing so fast. So, yeah. But I, I guess I want to know, like, if you are elected to city council, like what are the things that you want to focus on as your issues, things that, that you want folks to know about?
For me, the housing situation is really critical. Having lived in the San Francisco Bay area for twenty years, I have the lived experience of what happens if you don't pay attention to housing in the beginning.
Can you say a little bit more about that?
Area has had a housing shortage when I moved there. And so housing shortage means one, prices are insane. At the time when I was living there, I moved there in nineteen eighty-five. You know, people were spending for a studio that would be like fifteen hundred dollars in nineteen eighty-five dollars.
Wow.
It was normal for people to live in shared rentals. And not just shared rentals like with your friends, but people would rent out a house and then rent out the rooms to total strangers. I lived with total strangers for two years. Because, with my daughter, because that's what we could afford. And because of the housing shortage, every time, you know, your lease comes up, the money goes. It's, you know, the rent goes up and the rent goes up. So you end up moving farther and farther away from your work in order to afford your housing. I was fortunate in the area that I lived, that the school districts did have a policy where you could be enrolled in the school that was closest to your daycare. So my daughter did not have to get moved. That is not the case. You know, I don't know if anybody else has that for, you know, typically if you move, your kid moves to whatever, you know, whatever your school is. So you're moving farther and farther away. For thirteen years, even though I had a decent paying job, I did not have housing security because the rents were going up so fast. When the rules on mortgages were changed for financing, so that you didn't have to put down as big of a down payment. I withdrew ten thousand dollars from my retirement because you could do that without penalty for a first time home, you know, down payment. And I bought this very modest little condo that was a forty-five minute drive on a good day from where I worked. I used Bus Rapid Transit to get to work. So I was getting up freakishly early in the morning to catch a bus. And I would see the people who were on the bus with me, people of all ages, including senior citizens who were still working. Cause that's what they needed to do to afford their house, food and their housing. And doing that long, it was Bus Rapid Transit. So at least we didn't have stops till we hit San Francisco.
Yeah.
But it's all, you're spending a good hour each direction. Plus you're working your eight and a half, nine hours on the job.
And did you put your daughter on the bus with you to get to?
No, she, so she, she went to, she went to school and they had the daycare. We found this daycare that had this arrangement with the taxi company, that the taxi company went up to the school, would, would transport the kids to and from the daycare in the school.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. So that's how we were able to, to manage that. But that's a crazy way to live and it's exhausting way to live.
Yeah.
And that's, and, and that's for somebody who has a decent job. So for people who are lower income, it's a, a great sense of hopelessness. You're never gonna get ahead. And if Columbus, not just Columbus, but our whole central Ohio region, doesn't get a handle on housing shortage that we have now, then we're gonna end up like that. And once you hit a certain point, there's no going back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would you consider us at the beginning of the?
We're at, we're, we're at the beginning. We're at that tipping point. Cause right now we're only built, the, the, central Ohio is only building half the housing that it needs. It's only building eight thousand units and, and we need double that. And just imagine when Intel and Honda and LG and all those open up, we're gonna get a tsunami of people.
Yeah.
And where are they going to live? So we need more housing of all different varieties in all price points. Cause a lot of times people hear affordable housing and they immediately assume that you're just talking about low income housing.
Right.
But no, we need housing for everybody. Cause also our school teachers need a place to live. Our firefighters need a place to live. The barista at our favorite coffee shop needs a place to live. Everybody needs a place to live that they can afford. That's not an hour away from where they work.
Right.
And the only way to resolve this is to build more housing. Building, that means more density. And I know a lot of people don't like the idea of density, but Columbus is a big city now. And in big cities, you have housing density.
Yeah.
In big cities, you have more apartments for people of all income levels. There's a stigma.
We've gotta get with the program there, I think.
There's a stigma that the only people who live in apartments are people on section eight who are, I actually heard at a community meeting not too long ago, in the Hilliard area, where this, this complex, the, the rents were gonna be between one thousand and three thousand a month. And these people were outraged saying that it was gonna be section eight housing. And somebody said, and those people don't take care of their children.
Yeah, not true.
Not true. Not true.
Not true.
Poor people love their children.
Absolutely.
Facts.
Absolutely. Parents that work so much that they never see their kids. Shots fired. If you don't like it, it is what it is, you know, but poverty does not mean that you don't love your children.
That you don't love, it doesn't mean that you're a criminal.
No.
It doesn't mean that you're a pedophile. And they were espousing all this filth in this meeting. And there was.
For a thousand dollar to three thousand dollar rental.
Poor people can't buy, can't rent, one thousand to three thousand dollar a month rentals.
Yeah.
And they were just, this meeting lasted a couple of hours and all these people did was spew these horrible hateful things about people in, living in poverty. And the apartments weren't for people living in poverty.
Well, that's also like, I think what you were saying is like, we, mindsets need to change in order to understand that at some point, there will be entire families, you know, of people who are considered middle class, living in apartments, just like they do in Chicago or San Francisco.
City and then nobody thinks anything of it.
It's just the way, you know, it's the way of life. And so we've got to understand that given all of the development that has happened, the way of life has to change. And how do we not, you know, leave folks behind? So that they're out in a place that they don't even, no offense, gala police, but like, a lot of people are gonna have to like move out to places like that. And their job is in downtown Columbus. What does that do to a person's, you know, every day as you, as you have described was your experience?
And with, especially if you have to, you're gonna have to drive because lord knows we don't have good public transportation. So you've got all that money for gas. You know, you're, 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 it's truly working poor. You're worked into poverty simply because of the expense.
Yeah.
Worked into poverty. That's, I've never heard that phrase before, but that's exactly what it is. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so we need to think of the big picture for our public transportation. If within Columbus, we need people to be able to find transportation that gets them to jobs, gets them to school, gets them to stores. Other cities have been able to create routes that do this. We need to do the same. But then we also need to have those routes so that people can get to ultimately the Intel plant and all these other job centers. So we need to be able to move beyond just within Columbus.
I, I got a question for you. I do say this respectfully, right? It's, I feel like, I, I might have asked this on the previous episode, but I feel like, everybody knows the things to say about like the problems with Columbus. You know, it's like, all right, we're talking about housing, talk about transportation, talk about schools and, you know, all these different things. But I, I think that what I sometimes struggle to hear, or the things that like when I'm talking to other people in the community, what they're not hearing is how are we actually going to fix the problem, you know? I mean, you kind of spoke to it when you were saying like density and everything, but what does city council do to like, you know, actually steer us towards that where, you know, we are having more housing density. We are actually having better bus routes and all that type of stuff. You get what I'm saying?
Well, one thing that the, the city can do, and they're in the process of, is changing our zoning. Having served in the Westland area, there's a lot of land that could be developed for houses, apartment, whatever, that was owned agricultural. And so you have this whole long process of changing zoning. And then you have a lot of variances that you have to get. And so it can take a year just before you can break ground because of this incredibly outdated zoning. And then the, the permit process and there's so many different things. Well, you're getting any of the permit for that, a permit for that. And this is a thousand dollars and it's like, we need to streamline that whole permit process and have the different zoning to meet the reality of what Columbus is today. So that you don't have somebody who's wasting so much time just trying to build, start building. And that's even just for individuals who want to build an individual home. It's amazing just how cumbersome our building and zoning process is. It's just really super cumbersome. I see this even for commercial development. The, near where I live, there's a sheets going in. And they wanted to put in, you know, their signs, you know, they have their particular branded signs. Their signs are slightly smaller than what the zoning requires. So they had to go through a variance process, paperwork for every single sign they wanted to do because it was smaller. And of course, then you had to pay for all these variances. And it's like, this is stupid. Why does somebody have to get a variance and pay, then pay the money for that? So that they can make their sign a little bit smaller than what the, what the zoning was. I could see if it wanted it bigger, but smaller.
Yeah.
So somewhere along the line, a lot of weird zoning things came about.
And they've never been changed.
And they've never been changed. Because it's a lot of work to change.
And that's within city councils, like purview to be able to change those type of things.
And so that, that is in process. They have an independent company that has been working on that. I wish it was happening faster. Now, I of course have never tried to change zoning or rewrite zoning. So I really don't know how long it takes to look at something and rewrite it. So maybe it does take as long, but I wish it was faster. So that would be a huge step in enabling places to get built as if they didn't have to waste so much time.
Yeah.
Going through the zoning process.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So that, that, that's one that easily, you know, easily, relatively speaking, you know, that, that Columbus City Council can directly have an impact on.
Got you. What type of things can we do that isn't already in progress that, like, all right, why aren't we doing this right here?
This is one of those things, because I'm not on council now, I don't have, there's not, I don't have the complete picture of all these other things that, you know, could be in the process of, of happening.
That's fair.
Or things that, that we can legally do. Cause I know sometimes people come and say, well, we should just, you know, make property owners do this, this or that, or not allow property owners to do this. And some of them are going, I'm not sure that's legal.
Okay, yeah.
I'm not sure you can always tell a property owner certain things. So, so this would be, you know, my learning process. Because all of us, there will be three new people coming on, on council. And it will be a learning process for all of us, cause we haven't done that work yet. And so we don't know all of the intricacies of what can be done and what should be done.
Got you.
And no one is actually running against you in your district.
An opponent.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I have, I have a Republican opponent.
Ah, okay. What, my information was old.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, that's, actually, it's, most people don't, don't know. When petitions were originally filed, my opponent was one signature short of being, of having enough valid signatures.
Okay.
And so he went through the process where you get a whole, you know, go, go back through the list and you get people notarized. And he was able to, no surprise, he was able to find one valid signature. And so, but that was like, you know, a whole nother, a good month later. And the, the local news didn't pick up on that. Yeah. So we had, we had altogether three people who had filed petitions that originally did not go through. And my opponent was the, was the only one who was able to get enough valid. We had, there were originally three people who filed for. We had, there were originally three people who filed for district six, which is Hilltop and Westland and Southwest area. And of those three, two of them um did not have enough valid signatures. And there's was a far enough over that they were not able to. That in. So it was interesting that district six was ended up with with the three. And I'd like to point out to people, cause I say, and the, of all the people who filed, the only people who did not get on the ballot were two white men. So those two, yeah, those two are, yeah, were not able to get back on back on the ba- on the ballot because they just didn't have, you know. They didn't have enough.
Man, I got a question. I don't know if I should ask.
Interesting thing, when this whole process started. Everybody was certain that there was going to be a bunch of people filing. Because you only need two hundred and fifty signatures now, which is hard work, but it's doable. We thought for sure, like district three that involves Clintonville and eight that has German Village. These communities where you have so many engaged citizens who are loudly engaged. We thought for sure there would be several people filing for Clintonville, you know, lived in Clintonville and German Village and, you know, Near East Side and all that. And then when filing day came and we're like, really?
I think it flew, I think the changes flew under the radar for um a lot of people. That would be my guess. I would say next time, maybe you'll see, you'll see more people.
You think so?
I don't know. Maybe.
And I do understand that some people, a lot of people say they wanna run for office, but the process of the petition signature gathering. Is it's hard work, cause you're doing it in the dead of winter. You've gotta get those, we're, you know, every weekend from, starting for the, actually, starting from election day. Through the end of January, I was out there every Saturday and Sunday, except for Christmas weekend and only because it snowed. Knocking on doors. I would just, every weekend I'd go, this is the subdivision I'm hitting. And I would go knock after door, after door, after door. A lot of people aren't home. A lot of people don't answer their door. So there would be times when I would only get like six signatures. And then other times, you know, I would get more. And I had a handful of friends. Who were helping me and they would, they came out, you know, a few times. But I was just out there weekend after weekend after weekend. And you really have to have that dedication. You really gotta want it. To do the amount of work that it.
Oh, sorry. Um, I was just gonna say, well, and a lot of people are politically engaged. But they don't necessarily want all of the stuff that comes along with, you really have to have a thick skin. To be in public office. And not everybody, and I think a lot of people recognize that and they just are not willing to. And that's not to invalidate them. I get it why.
It's hard on your family. Very hard on your family, especially for your family members to hear and see on social media what people say. About them. Yeah, really horrible things. My husband is not on social media, so he bypasses all of that. But yeah, it's really hard to put yourself, you know, out there. When I was knocking doors. You know, there are some people who'd say, well, people say, well, I don't know anything about you. And so I would, you know, give my little spiel. And then people would go, a lot of times I would only get part with three. People go, oh, okay, you're you're involved in the community. I'll go ahead and sign. And but then like I had this other woman who looked at me and she goes, you're a Christian? I don't like Christians. Christians should be in elected office. And so then I said, I go, well, the petition only enables me to be on the ballot. It doesn't require you to vote for me. And I go, so if you don't like Christians, then on election day, you can just not vote for me. And then she went, oh, okay.
And yeah, I mean, that, I think that is the nature of work like this, is that sometimes someone, someone might. Like come at you sideways that way, or what you might feel like is sideways, but that doesn't necessarily mean that like. No common ground can be found or they won't vote for you. Or, you know, that is why it is so, I think, important for people to knock doors and things like that. So that they can have face to face conversations with people. A lot of times people just don't. Because of there's, there's just so much going on in our everyday that we have to deal with. That people aren't always, like it's, elections are not always, especially like city council and things like that. It's not always on folks radar.
Still gotta run those errands. We still gotta do the laundry. We still had to mow the lawn. We have, we all have, living takes a lot of time. And if you have children living at home, or if you have an older adult family member that you care for, it takes a lot of time. And it's tiring. You know, for all the modern conveniences we have that's supposed to make life easier. Life didn't get easy. No, it was easier than than like, like my great grandparents' time.
I know what you mean.
It's still, it's.
We have our own unique challenges. Yeah, for sure.
I'm over here, I'm racking my brain like trying to make sure that I ask this question the right way. I guess like, the question, again, this podcast is all about helping um our viewers and our listeners to get to know. The candidates more and so they can make a really informed decision. I'm not sure that we'll ever have uh the other person that's running um for city council on this show. But I I'm still just, I I guess I curious about like the contrast between you guys. You know, in in what ways I differentiate you from him. For voting purposes and everything, just so they can know, like this is why it's better to make this decision rather than that one in your opinion.
Outside of that, you're a Democrat and that person.
If you're endorsed by the Republican Party in Ohio, that means that you adhere to their policies. We, we all know what the Ohio Republican Party's policies are. So that tells you about the the values of my opponent. But also a big thing um that I mentioned for, you know, with people is that. There are people who say, well, I wanna get elected to office and then I'm gonna do things for the community. Well, I've been doing things for the community for the past decade. And so for me, getting elected and up for office enables me to do more good. So I'm not, I've not been a advocate in that I just talk about issues that matter. I've actually been someone who goes out there and does the work to get things done. In my community, um when I was ser- serving in the Westland area, food insecurity was an issue that was brought up. A lot of people in the community say, you know, we have food insecurity out here. No pantries. No produce distributions out there west of two seventy. So I worked together with a group of people. We got Doctor's Hospital to be our sponsor. And we start opened up a produce distribution that was year round, which is unusual, most or only in the spring and summer. And we gave out produce in a community that didn't have access. And when the pandemic hit, that meant we had to take it outdoors. We had been in a firehouse. We took it outdoors to the firehouse parking lot. And we all remember when the pandemic hit, it was winter. Our first day out there, it was twenty five degrees. And we were out there feeding people. The line wrapped around the block. We had to have the sheriff's office control traffic. We had so many people there for food. I ran that for six and a half years until Mid Ohio recognized by looking at their data. That's a community that yes, did have food insecurity, cause the more suburban areas do have people living in poverty. Contrary to common misconception. And so they opened up a fresh market just a couple blocks down. So I was thrilled to be put out of business by an order, by something that's actually gonna be better.
Why you do the work, right?
Right, and so addressing homelessness, I was on the steering committee that opened Jordan's Crossing Resource Center. Which it went from Fred Reiser having a feeding program on Friday nights to being, I have actually a facility. Where people who lack housing and just people who are in need can go and be connected with resources there. Such as the street medicine is there, um Southeast is there. There's all these organizations are there. So people can directly be, you know, connected with resources. On the Hilltop, we had a lot, we noticed there was a lot of older adults who were having challenges aging in place in their home. They were older. They couldn't keep up with the yard work. They couldn't clean the gutters. They were socially isolated. So I partnered with Fran Ryan and the Columbus and Franklin County Age Friendly Program to launch a program called Vill on the Hill. That helps older adults age in place successfully. So this has always been my model, is that I actually connect with the community, hear what they identify as their needs. And then come up with some sort of solution. Does it solve the problem? No, but it alleviates it for a good section of the population there. That's always been the way I operated. And that's why I became interested in serving on council, starting way back when, gosh, I guess it was maybe, was it twenty seventeen, maybe when Zach Klein left? Because I felt that by serving on council, I could do more good for more people.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it sounds like you've done a lot of really meaningful and even transformative work. On your side of town and on the ground. So, I mean, I, I appreciate you outlining all of that. That is really important. What you said is some folks are like, I'll serve the community after, well.
And what I've done, it's, we've always been small scrappy groups. We, you know, we didn't, when, when. The Jordan's Crossing Resource Center was open, there wasn't any government money there. It was all volunteer labors and vo- and donations. Very scrappy. We met in this. Building that was a step away from an abando until it was, could be, you know, refurbished and still looks really funky. Because that's what it took to get it done. If we had gone the traditional route of, well, let's get money from the government, then it takes longer. There's all these stipulations. I did, um in twenty twenty, I left um that that position at of Jordan's Crossing. Because I knew the opponent that I ran, that was running against was known for attack ads. And I was afraid that she would go after Jordan's Crossing. Being a place that served the poor and was really scrappy and and stuff like that. So I intentionally stepped away from that to protect them from from my opponent.
Yeah, when I, um, when we first started this, I was saying about how I had to candidate for him. I remember you talking probably more than anybody else. And there's a lot of good things I would say that day. But I was like, I wanna hear more. And this is exactly, because I felt like there was more to be shared. And um it's part of the reason why I personally don't really like candidate forums. Because it's like, it's so short and the questions are very structured and, you know.
People don't really get a good sense. Format is purposely like that. And something about that needs to change too, but we can talk about.
Real conversations with people and get to know you as a person too. You know, if you're gonna be representing us and making decisions for us, that's gonna impact everybody. Like, you know, Tree has kids, I have kids, you feel me?
It's, it is important because yes, and. You know, like the little newspaper thing, you know, it's always just a short little snippet. And you don't unders- learn about the lived experience of the candidate. Where they, where they work. I work in the middle of the Hilltop. I work in a place where during the school year, my parking lot is a place where people are frequently attacked. By teenagers after school. Dealing with homelessness, that's a, that's a daily occurrence. Having to address homelessness in that, in that setting. To be in a place where people do worry about their safety and security. But also to be in a place where there is a lot of good things happening. And it's not just the soundbites that you, that you hear. And so by, yeah, having conversations like this, you can get to know people's like, oh. She doesn't just, she doesn't live, you know, live in, you know, she she's not living in the fancy neighborhood. And she's not going to the fancy office. Not that there's anything wrong with going to the fancy office, but we need people who.
Just hire somebody to do all the PR stuff on the website and say all the right words and everything like that.
The stuff that was on the website, I wrote it. And then the person that I have, the the person who knows the tucky part. Then put it together to make it all look pretty.
It's a very nice website. You guys should go visit it.
It is very nice. And the one last thing though, that I do want to say is like what I've heard from you. Is I think a lot of times, like you mentioned permits, you mentioned how long it takes to do all of that stuff. Well, that type of stuff also applies to like people getting stuff that they need right in the moment, like food. And, you know, you'll hear, oh, well, we'll have that stood up in six months or a year or whatever. And you're like, people are hungry now. I feel like from your experience, like you will be a person who has um done work with that firsthand. And will understand that like, no, 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 that timeline can't work. And that this is the reason why. And I feel like we need more people like that on council who will have. Will will be brave enough to say that. Like, we can't take forever to do that.
When I was working, doing the produce distribution, Mid Ohio had a policy that, you know, we were, our distribution on Saturday, if it was a three day weekend. Then they wouldn't give us food. And I'm like, well, but people still need to eat. And they're like, well, no, we don't deliver. And so I, and I said, I go, I told the team and I go, well, I'll raise up the money and we'll buy the food. And so I did a shout out on Facebook and said, friends, I need to buy the food for the produce distribution. Can y'all send me Kroger gift cards? And I got close to three thousand dollars in Kroger gift cards from, from all my friends. Came in. And so we went to Kroger and we ordered it. And we had to go in there with those dang gift cards. To pay for all that. Because people, you know, people don't get to, you know, there's no three day weekend from hunger. We're not gonna have food because it's a three day weekend. That's crazy. So, so I did what I had to do and I begged my friends.
That example is just one example of how that happens a lot. And how there has to be someone that says, actually, no, that makes absolutely no sense. And if you're not going to do it, like, we will do it.
We make things so cumbersome. People applying for, you know, emergency assistance for things. And they make it so cumbersome. And, and well, you know, you have to go down to this office. Well, have you ever tried to get down to that office? If you live on the far west side.
Barriers for people.
So hard. We should be the one inconveniencing ourselves to take the services out to people. Rather than inconveniencing people to make it easier for us. We've got computers. We can go set up anywhere where there's a wifi. It's not that hard.
Man, listen, we um.
We could talk about.
I don't know. Well, no, we've never, we never endorsed anybody, at least not on the podcast and everything. But I just wanna say, I think you guys have a very good idea of who I'm going to be voting for as far as this particular race and everything. And um, yeah, I hope that, I hope you guys do the right thing. That's all. Um, where can the people find you?
Um, my social media and my website are all Nancy for Ohio using the number four. So nancyforohio.com for the website and Facebook, Instagram and what used to be Twitter. It's Nancy, number four, Ohio.
Nancy for Ohio, you got anything else you wanna ask her? Nancy, thank you so much for sitting down with us and opening up with us. This has been a pleasure, a joy. Um, I'm very excited about the future. Um, like I said, I know what I'm gonna be doing when the election comes around. And uh, you know, this is great. Is there anything else that we didn't ask that you wanted to other people?
I could just go on forever. It's just part of my DNA. So thank you for the opportunity to just.
Thanks for joining us, honestly.
Thanks so much.